And call this meeting to order and establish a quorum.
Board President Sarah Hines.
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur.
Yes.
Board Member Ann Marie Rosen.
Yes.
Board Member Cara Palestrini. And Sebari Nakbar will be arriving shortly.
I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of Education's special meeting today, December 17th, 2021. We appreciate you all taking the time to be here with us this afternoon. May I please receive a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Board President Sarah Hines.
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur.
Yes.
Board Member Ann Marie Rosen.
Yes.
Board Member Cara Palestrini.
Yes.
Thank you. Ann Marie, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Ann Marie. And for those of you that are arriving, if you'd like to make a public comment, if you could please grab a ticket from the red ticket machine, that's how I'll be guiding our public comment session today so I can keep everybody in order. Thanks. I'd like to notify the audience today that because this is a special meeting, it is not being broadcast. It is being audio recorded, and that will be posted at a later time on our website. And now we'll move into public comment on non-agendized and open-session items. So this is where members of the public may address the board regarding items on the open-session agenda or topics within the board's jurisdiction that are not on the agenda at this time. I'd like to remind everybody that everybody wishing to address the board, you'll have three minutes this afternoon. And if we could please respect the three-minute time mark, since we probably have a line of people behind you, that would be appreciative. The Board of Education is committed to maintaining a respectful and productive environment for us all here this afternoon that fosters a culture of civility where the staff and our community and board members feel safe to express themselves and they're free from any threats, harassments, or bullying. The board welcomes your comments and requests that you express yourself accordingly. And again, we thank you for taking the time for being here today. I will go ahead and start with public comment number 61. Yes, please. If you could have a seat and speak into the mic, thank you.
Better? Good afternoon. My name is Phil. I have a child in the Carmel Unified School District. I am not anti-vaccine, but I am anti-mandate, especially for our kids. There is a growing group of parents, many who are vaccinated, that are not happy with Governor Newsom's proposed child vaccine mandate. If this mandate goes forward, many are considering withdrawing from the district or moving out altogether. It appears that the governor seems to have overlooked some of the following points taken from the CDC website. Number one, the death rate for children under 19 is statistically zero percent. The COVID vaccines will not prevent infection or transmission of COVID-19. Vaccinated people are not less infectious than unvaccinated people. Vaccinated people acquire and transmit COVID-19 just as easily and as often as unvaccinated people. That's from the CDC's website. So what role does the board have? We know that the pandemic-related rules are being set by the state of California under the governor's declared state of emergency. However, we know that this board has an obligation to represent its constituency and the unique conditions within our district. With that in mind, consider the following two questions. First, should there be any discretion allowed to school districts to implement the mandates based on local requirements and not a one-size-fits-all approach? Finally, could this board, in conjunction with the county health officer, offer the state a solution for meeting the intent of the mandates while allowing for alternate methods of compliance? In conclusion, we would like to request that the board establish a local advisory group with parental involvement to provide board feedback. And number two, consider adopting a resolution requesting the governor to rescind the COVID-19 vaccine mandate as a requirement for in-person instruction. I have a draft resolution here, and a copy was sent to all of you via email. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. And I would just like to publicly acknowledge that the board is in receipt of that document that you mentioned. Number 62, please.
Good morning, folks. My name is Justin Bradley. I have two kids at Tulare Cidos. And I've never been to a meeting like this before. And I've never met my Board of Education, so it's nice to see you all. I come here today because I see things in my community where we're kind of breaking apart a little bit. Not just in Carmel Valley, but it's across the nation. There's this huge, difficult conversation that we're all needing to have. And it's been my experience that difficult conversations tend to break down into adversarial conversations. And I don't want to see that happen here. I want to acknowledge a couple of things. Acknowledge the hard job that you guys all, I know you guys all have, especially you, Mr. Knight. This is probably the hardest time to be in education since desegregation these last two years. It's also a really hard time to be a parent. Because we all have difficult decisions to make. And it's not easy on anyone. No one has this pandemic easy. But my kids got to go to school today. And I think you guys have done a wonderful job providing for their safety. Do you all agree that my kids are safe in your schools? Because they wouldn't be there, right? What kind of parent would I be? But our kids are safe. And so you guys have a voice that I don't have. And I implore you, as this conversation degrades into vax or no vax, mandate or no mandate, or whatever it turns into, because a year and a half, we wouldn't have guessed. As a person who makes hard decisions daily, please keep in the forefront of your mind, because no one will ever present this option to you, that patience is always an option. We have all sacrificed and worked very hard to get to a place where we have safety. Last year's conversation was not about safety, it was unsafe. So our kids were not at school. But they're back and they love it. Please, when you're trying to decide, if you have a voice to say if there should or should not be a mandate for our children, because their safety is not our responsibility, or excuse me, their, our safety is not their responsibility, please call for patience. We have time. Let's use it and not alienate the parts of our community that are not ready. Please.
Thank you. Number 63, please.
Hi, my name is Haley Intakabi, and I have two children in the school district, and I'm also a pediatric nurse. And for the past 10 years, I've been taking care of kids. And I just, I'm going to be very, very quick. It's, to piggyback off of what he said, that our kids are okay. Right now, they're okay. And I feel like we need to shift the conversation to a celebration, because we've learned that our kids are okay. We have so much to worry about. We have grandmas and, you know, people that have, you know, my aunt with diabetes that's overweight. I have to worry about her. Thank God, I don't have to worry about my kids. My kids are okay. All of our kids are safe and okay. And instead of acknowledging that and celebrating it, I feel like it's just been put with a qualifier. But what are we sure? And I feel like it goes into the category of, that's where the parents come in. The parents get to decide if that qualifier is enough to have them do something differently or not do. We need to protect our kids. My third grader told me the other day that he wanted the vaccine, and I asked him why. And he told me, because he didn't want the school to shut down. Since when is a third grader responsible for shutting down an entire school? And it's not fair to them. We're the grownups, and we need to act like it. We need to take care of them. They need to play, they need to learn, they need to be kind to each other and kind to themselves, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 64, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Julia, and I have three kids in Carmel Unified. I was in attendance at Wednesday's board meeting and am unfortunately appalled by the dramatic overreaction and the inaccuracy of events presented by Mr. Knight in his communication to the stakeholders of Carmel Unified, as well as in his statements to the Herald. I was sitting next to the unmasked parent, and will validate that Mr. Knight did not ever ask her to put on a mask. It wasn't until after the 90-minute delay of the meeting and the police had called that he confronted her for the first time. The parent in question has a legal medical exemption. No one on this board is a doctor and has the right to decide whose medical exemptions are valid or not valid. Is this how a student with a medical exemption would be treated at school? I certainly hope not. The parent simply wanted her three minutes of time to say her piece, and she would have left. We were all sitting in the room together while the board was not there for 90 minutes. She was in that room with us. What would three more minutes to let her speak have done? It would have ended it, and we wouldn't have wasted the community's time. I'd like to quote some of Mr. Knight's comments in the Herald. "I never once felt like anyone was going to be physically harmed, but I worry about students seeing this and thinking that's an appropriate way to act in society. And I worry about the trauma. School is supposed to be a safe place for students, but I can't imagine how they felt walking back onto campus after hearing about what happened on Wednesday night. I'm not scared by bullies." Really? So are you referring to this parent and maybe me or other parents that were at this meeting as bullies? I encourage everyone here to watch the video from that night, and you will see voices of concern, absolutely. But there is not bullying going on. Raising a voice and speaking out of conviction is not bullying. Parents citing laws to protect themselves is not bullying. Both the police, the police, and I believe the school's lawyers told you repeatedly that everything that was being done was legal. Yet instead of finding solutions, you refuse to budge or think outside the box. Couldn't one person come up with a reasonable solution in the 90 minutes that you were sitting sequestered? And we were sitting while our kids were waiting for dinner at home and we had other things to do? I think you could have come up with a solution, or maybe even just spoken to the actual person who you were worried about. Parents who bravely step up at these meetings to share their concerns or to use their voices to question agendas or policies should not be referred to as acting inappropriately in society or as bullies, as Mr. Knight has labeled us in the Herald. Is your goal to frighten parents from speaking up, or is it only those who challenge what you're saying? They still have legal rights to, like it or not. This is not what Carmel Unified should be about. We should be supporting the right to free speech and opinions and honoring what each other believes. None of us feel the same about everything. This should be celebrated, not condemned. This is what we should be teaching our students, not telling them that this is bullying. The messages that you sent out to the community and to our students was wrong, and you should go and tell the students that this is what should be celebrated. It was inaccurate, and it was full of half-truths, and it was a great disappointment, and I hope the leadership does not continue like this.
Thank you. Number 65, please.
Hello. I have a very strong accent, so I don't like to speak in public, and this is like the first time I do it. But I needed to say something about it. So good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mika. I'm a parent, and I currently have two children in this school district. On November 18, when my daughter came back home from school, I asked her, how was her day at school? She quoted, "My first-grade teacher came to drop off some papers." She's in third grade. And when my friend asked her when we can restart the body programs, then she told us, "Raise your hands if you're vaccinated." And some kids did. Then she said, "When we're all vaccinated and safe to be around each other, we can start our programs again, and we can remove our masks." Eight years old, right? Quick note, Mr. Peterson did an excellent job in handling the situation with us and with the entire class. My children have acquired natural immunity following a COVID-19 infection in April 2020. They have been exposed to COVID-19 five different times in the past 18 months, including the Delta variant in Europe, because I go there every year, and they do not contract the infection anymore. Therefore, they cannot pass it to anyone. My children are the safest people to be around at this time. I would like to ask you, Mr. Knight, since you are very passionate about keeping the school environment safe, why is my child not feeling safe at school around their peers? I'm asking you today to stand with us and help us stop this mandate, allowing every parent to have the freedom of medical choice in regards to their children. It is our right as parents to make that choice. If the mandate goes through, we will be removing our children from your schools. And if you do come up with some homeschool programs or online programs, we will not use your resources, because it is totally discriminating. Do you want to be part of the problem or part of the solution in our children's lives? Thank you.
Thank you. Number 66, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Shelley Rittermahl, and I have two students in the Carmel Unified School District. And I just felt motivated to speak today. I do agree with everyone who has spoken so far, and I echo everything that they have said. But I wanted to also address that I've been, was really disappointed with how things went down on Wednesday night. I feel like that was taking us down a path of parents versus administration. And I feel like that was a wound that was supposedly happening during our distance learning time. And I don't want to reopen that wound. We're supposed to be working together. But, and I think we're all here, the board and the parents are all here, because we're all supposed to care about the kids. All these people, parents that are here tonight or today are not here because they really want to be. They're here because they care about their kids. They're not here to make your days, your day worse. They're here because they care about their kids. And a lot of the faces I see in this crowd are the same parents' faces that I see answer the call at school to volunteer. These are involved parents. But last night, or Wednesday night, we're requiring and calling the law enforcement to come in when there was no laws being broken, there was no discussions being held of even what the problem was at the time. I found that very disappointing, because I really felt like it was going down that path again of the administration against the parents when we're supposed to be working together. And I read in one of the papers that Ted Knight said that he was planning on requiring and requesting that law enforcement be at every future school board meeting, and I thought that was very inappropriate. It feels like it's criminalizing the parents, like we're doing something wrong. And that is not right. Also, in some of the things I read, you were saying, "We have to be careful about how we act, because the kids are watching." I feel like you're shaming the parents for speaking up against things that we don't believe in. Yes, the kids are watching, and I want them to see that parents are speaking up when they feel strongly and they feel opposed to something. And I also feel that anytime someone speaks against the status quo, that that's being viewed as as a bad thing, and it's not a bad thing, as long as we're being civil. Also, I echo some of these people's feelings about the mandate. I'm very against the COVID mandate for schools. Earlier in the school year, I talked to Ted Knight, and he said his main goal was to keep kids in school. And even if only 20% of the kids in school, their families don't have them vaccinated for COVID, if our district is, let's say, 2,500 kids, that's going to be 500 kids that are going to be kicked out of school. 500 kids that you had a responsibility to educate and to keep safe. They're going to be kicked to the curb. My final sentence here is I've been very disappointed in the overdramatization, the misleading, the misrepresentation of the situations that happened at the school board meeting on Wednesday night and also at the sit-out that happened in October. I just feel like you're losing a lot of credibility by overdramatizing a lot of the things that have happened and not acknowledging the things that did happen, like the sit-out. That was a protest, and it was never acknowledged by Ted Knight. Thank you.
Thank you. Number 67, please.
Hi, how you doing today? Thank you for coming out here and listening to everybody. My name is Jack. I have some children that would like to go to school, but we had a charter in Big Sarah, that's where we're at, and they moved the charter. And then public school is sort of our option, but I choose not to vaccinate my children. And so we've been dealing with this sort of discrimination for a long time within my family, because we choose not to. So this isn't new for us, but the people who have sort of gone along and who've believed that this was the proper path for them and their children, I absolutely support their personal decisions, and I support what they believe in for their kids and what's best for them. If that sort of attitude was extended to me and my family, then I could participate in public school. But from what I've seen, you know, it's frightening to me what actually, and I know a lot of the people here, and I can't believe how they've been portrayed, which I think is an absolute shame. And I have all these notes that I wrote down, and a lot of it are studies and proofs and things to point out, like this thing is not dangerous at all. And maybe that there's some other incentive that's happening to make the decisions that we're making that don't have a lot to do with health, and they have a lot to do with believing what people see on television, believing what people are reading in the Community Weekly or what have you, without any sort of thought or process to its indoctrination, because they haven't reached these conclusions objectively or on their own. You've been fed this information. And there's maybe 30% of the people that do believe everything they see and hear on television. When their favorite politician, whether whatever side you're on, their favorite politician comes up and says something, and people believe that maybe they're medical doctors, maybe they're scientists, they're not. They're politicians. And there's a financial incentive here that's underlying everything that we do. And it's sort of the elephant in the room, and I see it from an outside perspective. And I'm used to the discrimination, and it's actually nice to have other people that are beginning to understand what it's like to have their personal decisions under fire and to be segregated and discriminated against. And the people who are supported by these mainstream media outlets and the messaging that they carry, they feel that they are justified in discriminating. And they, and this is for something that, again, is not dangerous. And this whole Omicron nonsense, it's an anagram for moronic. And the reason that it's moronic is because it's not dangerous. And just to finish, in conclusion, I'll just read this, that the South African Health Minister, Dr. Joseph Fala, said of Omicron, and this has been going on a month in South Africa, "That according to scientific studies, this virus is spreading quicker than in previous waves. But the rates of hospitalization and deaths remain relatively low." And he added that Omicron should not prevent, quote, "A joyous Christmas and prosperous New Year's celebrations." I would love to hear Dr. Anthony Fauci come up and say something like that. I mean, give us the good news, because there's good news out there, so let's celebrate. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Number 68, please. Is there a number 68? Okay. I'll come back to you if you stepped away. So we'll move on to number 69. Okay, if 69 stepped away, we'll come back to you. Is there a number 70?
I am speaking up today, even though I am terrified to do so. I am terrified because I saw the 15-minute video of Superintendent Ted Knight talking outside to a parent during Wednesday's meeting. In that video, he tells her that he called law enforcement on her for not wearing a mask, to which she responded that she has a medical exemption, in other words, a disability. No one broke into the classroom. No one sought to forcibly enter the classroom. No one tried to pry a door open. No one was showing signs of heightened hostility. No one started screaming obscenities. There was no angry mob. One parent in a mask explains in the video that she just wants to give her babysitter a timeframe for the meeting to end. Dr. Knight was not, again, wary of a volatile response from the unmasked parent if news that law enforcement was on its way became known. In fact, he admitted that he had never met the parent before and had no personal experience with her being confrontational in the past. He doesn't dispute that board members were unmasked in that same classroom. Most importantly, and please focus on this fact, the person who Dr. Knight tells that law enforcement was on its way in the video is the same person whose disabilities prevented her from wearing a face covering. So he cannot have been concerned that she would have had a volatile response or have created an unsafe environment, because he is the one who told her. When police officers arrived, they did not arrest the person for having a disability, as anyone with a fraction of common sense would have been able to tell Dr. Knight over two hours earlier. So he could have moved the meeting outside, started a Zoom session. The board could have been in the classroom, the other parents could have been in the library, it would not have been confusing, or accommodated the parent. Instead, for reasons still unknown, Dr. Knight strategically designed a hostile and traumatic environment by calling multiple law enforcement agencies. At least seven police vehicles and at least eight officers from Monterey County Sheriff and Highway Patrol arrived on a woman for being disabled, gratuitously escalating an event that could have been easily resolved without involving our hard-working police officers. Two of, by the way, have been called here today and deserve recognition. He then proceeded to use his district-wide email platform and contacts with the media to disparage a parent and test- to disparage a parent and testifying the district-wide trauma he caused. Let me be clear on my only point here. My main concern is psychological safety. I never once felt like anyone was going to be physically harmed, but we're models. Kids are watching how we behave and act. I worry about students seeing this and thinking that's an appropriate way to act in society, and I worry about the trauma. School is supposed to be a safe place for students, but I can't imagine how they felt walking back onto campus after having heard about what happened Wednesday night. I imagine that they are terrified. I know that I now am. If he is willing to threaten, intimidate, abuse, and harass a parent because she has outspoken about being disabled, how will he bully me and other parents who are outspoken about being Jewish? I know a dozen parents, including myself, want to speak on January 26 about the swastikas and antisemitism happening on our campus, and I am terrified. I am begging that this board direct Dr. Knight to send a district-wide email with transparency, so we don't have to be afraid to talk up anymore. Thank you.
I'll go back and call 68 or 69 again in case they stepped away. I just want to make sure everybody's heard this afternoon. Okay. We will move on to number 71, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking the time to hear all of us. My name is Scott. I'm a parent of children at Carmel High School, Carmel Middle School, and Carmel River School. And I'm speaking about a different issue, but I wanted to note that I was at the meeting on Wednesday waiting to speak, and I appreciate promptly rescheduling a meeting. But before I talk about this, I do want to note, from a person whose career has been based around conflict resolution, I have to say it's one of the worst-handled meetings I've ever experienced in my entire life. So, the issue that I came to speak about is the issue of the swastikas and other signs of hate that were found at Carmel High School. Sam Piper noted that the response is focused on prevention through cameras to catch the people and explaining punishment. And while I feel that is helpful, I feel that misses the point of the overall issue. Expressions of hate as part of teenage alienation do not crop up overnight. Someone does not wake up in the morning, one morning, and just decide out of the blue to post signs of hate against multiple races and people. Teenage alienation happens. It's happened for generations. It's not a great shock. There's endless stories and movies and examples of teenagers shocking their parents by getting Mohawks and whatever else. But the decision to go ahead and express hate for it is something that is inculcated throughout years through something and is not, again, in overnight development. And openness and willingness to express hate and exclusion is built by time and must be countered by time from it. And that means starting from the elementary school age on for it, so that by the time a teenager feels anger or frustration or alienation, their choice and ways to express it are not through hate. So, if nothing else from it, I want you to take away kind of one point from all this, that early childhood education, preschool and elementary years are the most impressionable years for a child and need to be the time where they experience inclusion, so it becomes part of their mentality, part of their identity, and part of the overall culture of the community. Waiting to talk about race, religion, intolerance, things like that in teenage years is too late. We've actually missed the opportunity for that. And right now, we have numerous occasions and incidents of exclusion at the elementary school level in which families of all different races and religions at various times feel excluded, and that builds a culture and identity that manifests itself in high school hate. And so, when things like this happen in the bathroom, while the events itself were shocking, it should not be a surprise. And so, I would implore the school board to look at avenues for inclusion from the early age and counter it from the beginning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Maggie. I identify as non-binary and part of the LGBTQI+ community and part of the Jewish community. I'd like to discuss two extremely important issues that are impacting our schools, the hate speech directed at Jews, African-Americans, LGBTQIA+ community, other minorities, and the exclusion of students that identify as neither male or female. Swastikas, racial slurs, and other disrespectful things have been present at our schools and impacted our students negatively. I saw the inclusion firsthand, as I often felt left out and like I did not belong, both because I'm part of the LGBTQI+ community and part of the Jewish community. Some examples of this exclusion are the father-daughter dance and during Christmas and Easter time. In conclusion, I feel like our public schools need to be intolerant of discrimination, hate, and exclusion. Our schools need to learn to love and accept everyone equally. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you so much.
Hello, and thank you for convening this meeting outdoors where it is safer. My name is Melissa Ullam, and I have two children at Carmel River Elementary School. I'm calling to strongly request that we have a specific DEI coordinator in the district so that Ted Knight does not have to carry the heavy burden of being both superintendent and the nondiscrimination coordinator. I've only been in the district for a few months. My family moved from Vienna, Austria in July, and already in the few months that we've been here, my children have witnessed firsthand in elementary school at the age of seven homophobic and antisemitic language in the school from their peers. I've never seen anything like this. My children attended preschool in Monterey, and they lived in Vienna, Austria amongst people from all over the world of all different ethnicities, religions, and sexual orientations. And I am so sad that my children, who were born just nearby at Chomp, are witnessing this for the first time at age seven. My children joined the petition to ask the Carmel River School Dance to see if they could join, even though they are both boys, but the PTA denied their request and told them they were simply wrong for even raising the issue. None of the children want to abolish the dance. They just want children who are boys, non-binary, or girls, and children such as children with foster parents, parents who are deployed, deceased fathers or mothers, to be able to join as well. No one is trying to take anything away. Like the previous parent who spoke earlier, I think education at the elementary school level is necessary so that we do not have the N-word, swastikas, and gay homophobic slurs written on the walls in high school. These are all red flags. We may have missed the boat for some of our children, but please help us by creating a dedicated position for DEI that will support all of the children right down to the kindergarten level. Our community is very strong, very well-resourced, and the vast majority of parents understand that this is incredibly important for our children to learn about, and we have the resources, and we should commit them responsibly to handle this very important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I was hoping to do this earlier in the year, but due to everything that's gone on, it's taking me some time to get out here. I wanted to publicly introduce myself. My name is Jessica Faddis. I'm the Executive Director at the Carmel Youth Center in downtown Carmel. We do a lot of partnerships with many of your students and different subgroups that are part of this community. This last year, we were able to partner for summer camp and had a great experience with the school district. So, I look forward to seeing if that happens again this year. Recently, there was an email sent out to parents in regards to bus routes possibly getting canceled, and I want to recognize that I understand that this is not a financial cut, but this is due to a lack of employees available. The Carmel Youth Center is on that route. I just want to share and make sure that the district is aware that 41% of the Carmel Youth Center participants are actually on scholarship. As we might be in one of your highest economical real estate areas, we actually have many of your working parents using our facilities and our programs due to it being financially available for them and something that is important to their everyday lives. So, as you guys look into your bus routes, if for some reason a fabulous bus driver doesn't come to you on a silver platter like we're all hoping it does, that you guys look into possibly rerouting another bus to make sure that our average 40 participants have an availability to get to their after-school programming, because this is not just finding another way to get their kids home, this is now finding another place for their childcare. And at this time, many of our parents in our community are both dual working parents or they're single parents making ends meet. So, I just want to share that with all of you guys, so that you guys are aware that that's along that bus route. I also want to thank you for all of the things that we have partnered in the past, and I look forward to partnering in the future and being a part of this community. And as an All-In Monterey founder that has seen the many families throughout our county and has fed thousands in the last year and a half, please note that I am here and willing to be able to help with that partnership if any of our families are in need at any time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Number 75, please.
Hello. How are you all doing? I hope you're having a great holiday. My name's Lindsay Peelman. It's actually, it's Dr. Lindsay Peelman. It wouldn't be Dr. Lindsay Peelman without the Carmel Youth Center. The Carmel Youth Center allowed for me to get my doctorate in education from NYU, allowed for my husband to work in the Bay Area, for us to be down here, because these schools are fantastic. And the Carmel Youth Center is a really important part of our community. It's so important that I serve on the board at the Carmel Youth Center, and so, I know from working with Ted Knight that he has been honestly fantastic to work with. We both come from Douglas County, Colorado, and I explained to many parents yesterday, I too was there Wednesday night for the other board meeting, and I wasn't frustrated. My husband got to talk to Bill Schreier. They found out they were on the same aircraft carrier. I got to meet some parents that I've never met before. I saw some behavior that I didn't like. But we come from Douglas County, Colorado, and so, people here in Carmel have been fortunate enough to not have to experience some of the things that Ted Knight and I have experienced. And I'm talking about school shootings, multiple, parents pulling guns on each other in parking lots at elementary schools. That's not going on here in Carmel. And so, we look at the world through a different lens from a safety standpoint, and every interaction that I have had with him, I believe that the safety of our children has been his number-one concern. He's been willing to work with us, make sure that our kids are going to be safe getting to the middle school with closing the gate and protecting the kids at the high school. the entitlement, it's just this sense of entitlement here has honestly been so shocking to me. We're a community. We should be kind to each other. We should come in and ask each other, "How are you doing?" We shouldn't send emails. We should look at each other when we talk to each other, and we shouldn't send nasty I want to finish with saying that, you know, my daughter, not myself, did try to change the name of the school dance and work with the PTA at the River School. They were treated pretty terribly by parents on that side of that. And I just want to urge you, in closing, to really think about a diversity, equity, inclusion officer. I heard people didn't understand what DEI is, really confused how people might not know what that is right now, but I really implore you all to think about a director and officer. It's something we're doing at MPC. I am an educator. I've been in education for a long time. I teach in the community. We're hiring a diversity, equity, inclusion officer, and I really want you all to think about that.
Thank you. Number 76, please. That concludes this portion for public comment. Is there, before I close public comment and start to move through our agenda, is there anybody else here that's with us today that would like to make a public comment? This will be the last call for public comment as we move through the agenda. We won't be stopping at individual items to go back to public comment, so this is the last call for public comment. Okay. Thank you all again for taking the time to join us this afternoon and to share your thoughts with the Board of Education.
I just have to put my sweater on. Sorry. And before some of you leave, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays. Be safe. Stay warm.
Okay, we are going to keep things moving along here, so I'm going to move on to Agenda Item 1F. This is ACT/CSCA Comments, Board of Education, and our Superintendent Status Update. So, we'll start with ACT.
Bill Schreier, President, Association of Carmel Teachers. I was debating whether or not to speak, but the last speaker kind of inspired me to say something, and that is what she said about Mr. Knight. And I've made this clear to everybody that I've talked to.
Can you maybe put it closer to your...
How about that?
That's good.
You think a guy who trains people to public speak would know how to public speak, but we don't use mics.
I didn't even think, I didn't think you'd need a mic.
We don't use mics. But, yeah, so I'm not good at it. Anyway, to reiterate what I was saying, I heard a lot said about Mr. Knight, Ted, and then this last speaker kind of emboldened me to say something, because I know when I speak at these meetings, a lot of times I create more controversy than I intend to. But, so what? I find Ted to be one of the most collaborative people that I have ever worked with. I say that to my colleagues. I tell all of you. I think he puts students first, and that was what I was told by my counterpart at the district that he came from. And, you know, I can be skeptical, but I have seen nothing but the most collaborative, cooperative, caring way of doing a job that I've seen. And I just, I don't even know what I was hearing. It's so inconsistent with my experience of Mr. Knight to this point, and I know that that's true for the other Carmel High and Carmel Unified staff members that have had the good fortune to work with him thus far. So, I just want to make sure that's out there. I was asked by The Herald about what I saw at the meeting, and I said, "From my perspective, sitting in the room, the story was pretty accurate. I did not leave the room." I had a student contact me because she saw me on the video, and she wondered whether I was okay. And when I asked, what she said that she saw concerned her because it seemed that the individual who was taking the video was out of control. So, that's all I know about that, that what I read seemed accurate from my perspective. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an update from CSCA? Okay, seeing none. We will move into the updates from our members of the Board of Education. Due to the timing of today's meeting and moving through some board business, I will go ahead and save my board update for the January meeting, so I'll go ahead and start with you, Carl, if there's anything.
Yeah, I just want to thank everybody that spoke and came and took the time and the courage to express your feelings. And it's hard sometimes. We do appreciate it. I took a lot of notes. And again, I hope you all have a happy holiday season, and we've got a lot to think about. to think about.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess in the interest of time, I'll be brief as well, but I also wanted to thank everyone for coming out and giving your passionate comments. Um, I can see the, the depth, um, in your, in the way that you're speaking and what you're saying, and, um, we're listening. And I do want to say thank you for being respectful. Um, for me, that's the most important thing. You can, you can have differing opinions, you can have differing values, but as long as we treat each other with respect and take the time to listen to one another, um, I think that we can move through this as a community. I've been in this community for a long time and I hope that this isn't going to break us apart. Thank you.
Thank you, Seaberry. Anne Marie?
Um, I just wanted to say happy holidays to everyone and thank you so very much for speaking as you spoke. I appreciate the candor, I have taken notes and I'm going to be reviewing them, so thank you very much, and I'm going to save the rest of my comments for the next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. Tess?
Yeah, thank you all for coming and, uh, we are listening, and, uh, I just want to thank you, Ted Knight. I think you did a fantastic job how you handled that the other night, given the situation, and, um, we support you. So I think that's the most important thing, and that's one thing I learned at my CSBA conference, how important it is for us as a board to really be united and support our superintendent, and I feel like, um, we did a good job of that the other night. So thank you for your leadership, Ted.
Thank you, Tess. Before I move over to Mr. Knight's superintendent update, I would also just like, again, uh, to thank everybody for coming out today and speaking, um, your truth and how you feel, and we appreciate hearing from all of you, and thank you to the young student who spoke as well. I don't know if she's still here, but thank you so very much to her as well.
Thank you, Sarah. Just two quick comments, um, one on, um, our bus situation with the, with the youth center. I know Dan Paul, um, our Director of Facilities and Maintenance, and Craig Chavez, our Director of HR, are working very hard. I think we have three leads on a bus driver, um, and we are, A, very confident that we will be able to do that, but we have also talked, if for some reason when we come back we are not, um, we can put up to seven kids in a van, so Craig and Dan and I might be driving some vans when we get back from the holidays, but, yeah, we, we are confident we'll be able, and again, that's the reason why we put it out early. I know it puts some stress out there, but it was like if we can't, we have a retirement and there is no one applying. Um, and so after that went out, we did get three or four applications, um, and so HR is looking at, is there anything else we can do to incentivize? I think we already pay more than anyone in like the Tri-County area, um, and I've gotten in those salary wars with bus drivers in other places and they're difficult, but, um, they're working on it. We think we have a really good transfer from another district, um, but if not, we'll get some vans rolling. And, and second of all, just to touch very quickly on the vaccine mandate, because I've talked to several people on the phone and I know there's some folks here, um, we are confident with what we are hearing from our folks, and many of us heard it at CSBA, that the earliest that that would most likely, um, happen, if it did happen, would be January of 2023. As we know right now, um, the governor has not mandated anything. He's told CDPH that when it's FDA-approved, they want, um, those mandated, but as long as it's just the governor, every parent who does not want their kid vaccinated has a personal belief exemption. The only way that personal belief exemption goes away is if the legislature votes it in. And if a simple majority of the legislature votes it in when they return in January, it cannot go into effect until January of 2023. It would take a supermajority to make it go into effect next August. So I agree with the gentleman, we do have time to, to look at this. Um, the county superintendent, as well as many superintendents in the area, um, have been working on a letter, um, to send to Sacramento to ask for those personal belief exemptions to be included. Um, so I would tell everyone here what I've told the parents who I've talked with on the phone, and that is, "I would not panic, I would not pull your kid out of school." Um, there is time and people are still working on this. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Two, uh, Organization of the Board of Education. This is the election of the president. May I please receive a motion?
What, what kind of motion are you looking for?
Sorry, I, I just actually wanted to say that during a recent special meeting, um, the board, we made a collective commitment to have longer terms of office for the board leadership to ensure consistency and stability within the organization. And for that reason, with that, I'd like to make a motion to keep Sarah Hines in the board president seat for one more year.
I second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Agenda Item 2A, this is the election of the clerk. May I please receive a motion?
Discussion or motion?
I'd like to take a motion and then we can move into discussion.
It's kind of hard to just make a motion without the discussion, but...
After you make the motion, I'll ask if the board has any discussion.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, I think, um, in order of continuity, at this point in time, Tess should probably remain in that role. Um, should Sarah not be able to be the board president for whatever reason at a meeting, then we, our next most experienced person that's active right now is her. So I would make a motion that we go with Tess Arthur, but I also have some comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Do we have a second?
I second.
Now, is there any discussion?
Yes. I think that the primary job of the clerk is not just signing official documents, it's agenda setting with the superintendent. And typically, the clerk and the board president set those agendas. You can't have more than two board members, uh, in the same place at the same time, because that is a Brown Act violation. One of the ideas that I thought would be helpful is to, of course, have the board president be there working with the superintendent, but open up some time and some of those opportunities for agenda setting to other board members that might be interested in doing that, because the best way to learn about the inside of what we do is really that way. So I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think it would be a great learning experience, because that is the biggest piece of the job, so that's my comment.
Thank you, Carl. Do we have any other comments?
I think that's a good idea.
I agree, I do too.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Bear, Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Thank you all. Agenda Item 2C, this is the appointment of the Executive Secretary to the Board of Education, and pursuant to a Board of Education bylaw, our superintendent, um, is, is our secretary. May I please receive a motion?
A motion to appoint Ted Knight as our secretary to the board.
I will second that.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item 2D, this is to the, approve the appointments of the board representatives and alternates to various organizations and subcommittees. So we'll engage in discussion first, and if we need to rearrange representatives, or we can go ahead and keep them the same as we had both last year and the current year. Once we have our representatives slated in the appropriate categories, I'll go ahead and ask, ask for a motion. So if you could all bring up in your packet or look at the organizational tab, um, there is a piece of paper that is titled CUSD Board Committee Liaisons. On this document, you will see that we have committee liaisons with Community Human Services, Mission Trails Regional Occupation Executive Board, Monterey and the MCSBA, which is the Monterey County School Board Association. So we have a representative and a backup, or an alternate rather, for each of these Currently, Tess is our Community Human Services Rep- representative, and Anne Marie is her backup. Um, Anne Marie is our representative for Mission Trails Regional Occupation Executive Board, and Tess is our Monterey County School Board Association Executive Council Representative, and I am her backup, and I apologize, I don't know who the backup is for Mission Trails.
Carl.
Oh, Carl, okay. So, do we have any discussion, or would anybody like to do something else, other than what we just went through?
I'm willing to, I mean, I love Community Human Services, it's been a passion of mine and I love everything that they're doing, and I also love MCSBA, but I don't know, Seaberry or Carl, would you want to be the lead on either of those? Because I know Anne Marie is really enjoying Mission Trails, but I would love to spread the wealth if someone else wants to get more involved at those levels. I would like to stay on Community Human Services personally, but...
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little, I guess it just would, I would need to know the time commitment.
Well, and they, they meet, they meet once a month for two hours, it's a pretty big time commitment during the day.
That's, it's tough with me with my work.
Yeah. Okay, then I'm happy to stay on both. Go ahead, Carl.
Yeah, I was just going to say, after attending multitudinous board meetings, I would have to pass on that most generous offer that you have made.
I'm putting you as my second.
Okay, you could put me down as a backup.
So Carl will be the backup for the Monterey County School Board Association?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm going to be sick a lot this year. Just kidding.
Okay.
Because Tess never misses meetings.
So may I please receive a motion to move forward with Tess as our Community Human Services representative, with Anne Marie as the backup, Anne Marie as our representative for Mission Trails Regional Occupation Executive Board, with Carl as the backup, and Tess our representative for Monterey County School Boards Association with Carl as the backup.
And you are off the hook, my dear.
Oh.
If, um, if Carl doesn't want to do the Monterey County School Board Association, I'll be backup.
No, I'm not backing down. Yeah.
Okay, so can I please get a motion for what I just stated?
Make a motion to approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 2E, this is the approval of the schedule of Board of Education meetings for the period of July 2022 through June 2023. May I please receive a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the schedule of the Board of Education meetings for the period of July 2022 through June of 2023.
Second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
All right. The last agenda item in the Organization of the Board of Education is Agenda Item 2F. This is Resolution, Resolution Number 21-34, to approve designation of authorized agents. May I please receive a motion?
Motion to approve the designation of authorized agents for the Carmel Unified School District as presented.
I second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Thank you all. Agenda Item Number Three, this is the Consent Calendar. This is where the Board of Education may bundle a number of items and act upon them together in one motion through the use of a consent calendar. Consent agenda items are routine items deemed to be non-controversial for which Board of Education is not anticipated and for which the superintendent recommends approval. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the vote unless any members of the board request specific items to be removed for discussion. So as we've all reviewed the consent calendar in our packets and digitally, I would like to please receive a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Thank you all. Agenda Item, this is Agenda Item Four. These will be our action, discussion, and information items. So I'd like to first start with Agenda Item 4A. This is our first interim, first interim budget report for the fiscal year 2021, 2022. We'll receive a quick presentation this afternoon from Yvonne, and then we'll move into a motion to adopt. Hi, Yvonne.
Hi. I think it's on. Is that better? I just need to talk into the microphone. Uh, I'm going to keep my comments brief today. I provided two documents, well, there's three documents that were attached to your agenda, and, uh, one is the, the First Interim Financial Report Summary, and I added some additional information in there. I would like to have you focus on just the first page, because it is, the first page really gives you...
Yvonne, give us one second to get there.
Okay.
Um, this is...
It's, it's the one that's in summary, the summary report that is, uh, it looks like this. Yeah. I'm going to just focus on...
Sorry, Yvonne, give us a second.
Sure. Is everybody...
Is it called the financial overview?
Yeah, fiscal, yeah, it's the First Interim Financial Report Summary.
Okay, and we're on page one? You're starting on page one?
Yes, and I'm just going to stay on page one.
Okay, thank you.
Um, this, on, on page one, it does, it, it provides a very concise summary of the financial, uh, picture of the district on the general fund, and so you can see there on page nine that we, uh, that we have a beginning fund balance of 25.8 million at first interim on the unrestricted side. This is a little different than I presented in the past where I've provided just the combined. We do need to focus more on just the unrestricted side of the general fund, uh, because that's where we can make decisions. The restricted side are, they're, you know, set in stone on how you can spend the funds, there's not much leeway with that. So on, on the column that's labeled F, you can see that we had, uh, beginning fund balance of 25.8 million. We added revenues of sixty-three, almost 63.5 million. So we have a net increase projected at this point in time of 1.1 million, and so our ending fund balance will increase to 26.9 million. And so below that is the components of our ending fund balance and how we will, uh, potentially use those funds. So with fund balance, you have, uh, you have the option under GASB rules to assign and to commit, and so right now we are just assigning the, the, the fund balance. And if, if we were to commit any part of the fund balance, that would be by a resolution of the board. So there's some additional information here, I added some pretty graphs for your viewing pleasure, that hopefully help explain in a very summarized fashion how the district is doing. I will, I will conclude my comments that we are doing really, really well. We have a lot of, uh, financial, finance, financial pluses with the federal and state funds that have come in to support COVID, and they're, they're very, some of them are very broad in their use, so that is, has helped us be able to add components that you've heard about before, such as our wellness centers and social workers and clinicians, uh, among many other supports for our classrooms. The other thing that I provided was just a, a summary, two-page summary at a glance of, of the budget. This is a, a new document that, you know, I might change up as we go through, but hopefully you will find that useful. And that concludes my comments, and I am requesting approval of the first interim report.
Thank you, Yvonne. I know we've all had time to review this, um, from the board packet that was sent out. So thank you for the quick presentation this afternoon, and may please receive a motion to approve the first interim budget report for the fiscal year 2021, 2022.
So moved.
I like that. I second that one.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
I just want to publicly thank Yvonne in front of the board for the work she's done on this. I think as many of us know, we're a few people down, um, in the budget office, and, um, the work that she's...
and the work that she's put together on this, not only the work behind the scenes, but the visual graphics and everything are one of the best summaries I've seen of where we're at after first quarter. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Yvonne.
All right, Agenda Item 4B, this is a public hearing on the Association of Carmel Teachers for tentative agreement for the 2021-2022 school year. So I'd like to go ahead and open this hearing. We'll hear comments from the public, we'll hear comments from the board, and then we'll go ahead and close the hearing. So as of now, the hearing is open. Does anybody have a public comment regarding the Association of Carmel Teachers tentative agreement for 2021-2022 school year? Seeing there is none, does the Board of Education have any comments for this topic? Okay, seeing there is none, we're going to go ahead and close that hearing. And if I could please receive... Oh, sorry, Craig. Sorry. If I could just receive Craig.
Thank you for having me this afternoon. So the next item on the agenda is the tentative agreement with the Association of Carmel Teachers. This particular tentative agreement is around health and welfare benefits. And as presented before you, a general fund amount in regards to the impact of that, it was unanimously approved by the association members. It was also approved through the AV1200 process by the Monterey County Office of Education as well, in terms of our fiscal responsibilities.
Excellent, thank you. May I please receive a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Me too, okay.
So I'm glad that we're keeping everyone's health benefits whole and that we are treating both entities the same. So I have a couple of questions. One is, what percentage of an increase is this, the health and welfare benefit? And is this percentage included in the total percentage increase in negotiations? And my second question is, does this all include our administrators as well?
So I'll give you actually the very, very big number, and the very big number is inclusive of all employees in the district. When we have negotiated agreements, it does impact our unrepresented individuals as well, so certificated staff members who are not in the bargaining unit. We like to look at all of our employees as important. The result of that is a 0.85% resulting increase for all individuals, whether they're in the certificated bargaining, classified bargaining, administrative, preschool teachers, a variety of others. So that's inclusive of all of those. And when we take a look at negotiations as we bring information to the board, we're always going to bring those as a result of, or in relation to a cost of 1%. So this would be a part of kind of total compensation as we take a look at it in the negotiations process.
Great, thank you.
I thought it would be valuable too to let those of you in attendance and the public know about the process that it took to get to this agreement with both CSEA and the ACT. I know it was a new approach, and I just think it was a really great effort, and I think people should know about it.
I appreciate that. Yes, we actually took a step in a new direction, I guess you would say, in terms of that negotiations process, in an area in which there's a mutual interest. We have actually the negotiations teams for the district, ACT and CSEA, all sharing the space at the same time, really talking through those topics together and coming to a solution which is in the interest of all parties. So that way, individuals, as we're looking at that, we have fiscal responsibility, obviously. We have important things to make sure that we maintain a quality workforce within the district. So all of those things come out in those conversations, and we think we're going to get to a better result. This is the first time, I believe, that it's been done ever in the district, although we use what's called interest-based bargaining. So we're excited to move in that direction. There will be times, though, still, where we will sit down with just one of the teams, because the topics are just related to that team. But we'll still take those kind of methodologies in, in terms of working together and being problem solvers.
Yeah, I just want to make a follow-up comment on that. I saw Craig looking at me, wondering if it was the first time, hoping it might be. Well, it is, since I was at the first board negotiating session in about 1931. Having said that, I do want to say this. This is the most innovative thing I have seen in negotiations. Typically, they're done in silos, where you get classified staff negotiating with the district administration, and then you have certificate staff doing the same thing and administration. And so hats off to Ted on this, because putting them all in the same room is really about as transparent as you can possibly get. And that way, everybody in the district gets to see the needs of both employee groups and gets to help prioritize and understand exactly how that process is going to go. So I just had to add that. Thanks.
Carl, as much as I want to impress you, Craig and our ACT and CSC leadership were the brainchild behind this, so congratulations to them. Carl now loves you.
Thank you. And it will be reduced to each unit, because we're required to do that, so this one here is for ACT in particular.
Great. May I please receive a motion for the ACT tentative agreement for 21-22 school year?
I'd like to make a motion for the, to approve the tentative agreement for 2021-2022 ACT.
I second.
I'll second with Anne Marie.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 4D, this is another public hearing for the California School Employees Association, the CSCA tentative agreement for 2021. I'll go ahead and open the hearing, hear public comments, hear any comments from the board, and then I'll close the hearing. So right now, I'd like to open the hearing for the CSCA tentative agreement for the 2021-22 school year and hear any public comments. Seeing there's none, does the Board of Education have any comments? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the hearing, and welcome back Craig.
I should have stayed closer. This one is related to California School Employees Association representatives, and those are classified employees within the district, for individuals who aren't familiar. Many of our bus drivers, custodians, office staff. This is impactful to their health and welfare benefits as well. So it's for your approval.
Great, thank you. Does the board have any comments before I take a motion? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the classified employee agreement as presented.
I second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item 4F, this is the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant. I'd like to remind the Board of Education that this was on the last agenda as an information only, so we reviewed the information and we also discussed at the last board meeting. So today, we're just looking for approval. And Ted, if you'd like to do a quick recap before I take a motion?
You bet. This is the opportunity we brought forth last month, where some leftover state monies have been given to schools. I think we're the one where, once we build our strategic plan, we will be able to identify professional development for staff and spend it over the next five years. I think it was about $900,000, Yvonne, I believe. And so we did the first reading last month. This is just the second reading.
And we'll take a motion for approval.
I move to approve the Educator Effectiveness Block Grant.
Second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes. Can I just say for the statement for record that I know that there's been a lot of public interest in implicit bias training, and that is a priority, I think, of this board too, and I think you, Dr. Knight. So I just want to make sure that it's aware that that is included in this educator block grant.
Yeah, that falls under an allowable expense, I think we'd call it. You bet.
So yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Agenda Item 4G, this is Resolution Number 21-35 for the 2022-23 fiscal year CSP continued funding application approval request funding. This is our annual resolution for preschool, just as a caveat for our board members. Ted?
That is all I would read. Yeah, this is just a yearly preschool funding resolution to pass.
Great, may I please receive a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21-35 for the 2022-23 fiscal year for continued funding.
I second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Sorry.
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
And Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Agenda Item 4H, this is Resolution Number 21-36. This is authorizing agents to enter into contracts. So I'll welcome Yvonne back up.
This is a resolution that provides us the ability to conduct business between board meetings, and any contracts that would be signed would be brought to the board for ratification. So it allows Ted Knight or myself in his absence to conduct business between board meetings, and so recommending approval of the resolution.
Excellent, thank you. And I know we all read about this in more detail, so may I please take a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to have Seaberry make the motion.
I'll make a motion for Resolution Number 21-36, authorizing agents to enter into contracts.
I second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Yvonne. And I know you're staying up there. For Agenda Item 4I, last but not least, before we adjourn this meeting, this is Agenda Item for the Resolution of Number 21-37, Developer Fees for Public Report of Information. And again, for the board's information, this is an annual resolution as well.
Yes, and that's basically what I was going to say. It's an annual resolution. We are required to present this to the board with every year, and every five years, we have to provide a five-year report, and so both are attached. And I'm requesting approval of the resolution.
Thank you, Yvonne. May I please receive a motion?
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-37, Developer Fees for Public Report of Information.
Second.
Board President Sarah Hines?
Yes.
Board Clerk Tess Arthur?
Yes.
Board Member Anne Marie Rosen?
Yes.
Board Member Seaberry Nochbar?
Yes.
Board Member Carl Palestrini?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Yvonne. I'd like to thank everybody who stayed for the duration of this meeting. Thank you, Poncho, for the setup, and Tricia, and whoever else is still around. Thank you.
And you're officially on vacation.
Yes, thank you all very much, and I will consider the December 17, 2021, Board of Education meeting adjourned. Thank you.